Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Licensing Board of the City of West Bend. It is August 5th, 2024. Our first item of business is approval of our regular meeting Licensing Board minutes from July 15th, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Zingshaim. Any comments, questions, corrections? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. Our first item of business tonight is Vortex Pickleball Reserve Class B Combo Liquor License Application.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Zingshaim and Butchlick. Any comments, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is Boogies on Main Class B Combo License Application.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Butchlick and Zingshaim. Any comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, 1840 Brewing Company AB-105 Producer Full Service Retail Sales Application.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Zingshaim and Butchlick. Any comments, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is Pick and Save Number 417 Change of Agent.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Butchlick. Second, Zingshaim. Any comments, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is the Groom Goddess Massage License.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Zingshaim and Butchlick. Any comments, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Number seven, National Rarities Secondhand Article Dealer Application.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Butchlick. Second, Zingshaim. Any comments, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Number eight, Secondhand Article Dealer License Application.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Zingshaim. Second by Butchlick. Any comments, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And our last item is Boogies on Main Amusement Device Application.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Butchlick and second by Zingshaim. Any comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Clerk, thank you for getting all of these applications in our packet. They're all in our packet if anybody wants to take a look at them. And there's a, there's a lot of material that goes into that. So thank you for preparing our licensing board tonight. We have no more business in front of the licensing board, so I will adjourn.
I would like to call to order the City of West Bend Board of Public Works. We have five items on the agenda. Number one is approval of minutes.
Motion to approve.
From regular meeting July 1st, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Hold on a second.
Second.
Mary? All right, Bill. Alderman Smith. Any corrections or deletions? There are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number two, Stormwater Maintenance Agreement, W-8-6 Amendment Number One. Menards, good evening. Max.
Good evening. Thank you. These are typical stormwater maintenance agreements that are issued to property owners once we approve a stormwater management permit. This type of agreement are to define the, describe the improvements for stormwater management on properties that are redeveloped or developed and detail what those improvements are and what are the responsibilities for maintenance. So they will ensure that the improvements continue to function as intended from day one. And those type of agreements are required under our citywide stormwater management permit. So this first one is for an expansion to a cold storage area for Menards. That's a part where they extended to what used to be a park and ride, and they moved the park and ride to the south side of Parkway Drive next to Meyer. So this project impacted two stormwater management permits, the one for Menards area and then the one for the Meyer's area. However, improvements are only installed on the Menards side. That's why we only have this one agreement to approve tonight.
Give a motion.
Motion to approve.
Hold on a second. Who was the other second?
Second.
Zingshaim, any questions for Max?
Um, yeah.
Go ahead.
Max, the improvements in the Meyer parking lot for the new park and ride, will that come as an amendment to the Meyer lot? Or how does that work? Where do those show up?
Yes, we have an amendment for that permit. But the original permit was approved with that area already being paved. So we did not get any change in the stormwater management facilities. But when the permit was first approved, it was not determined what was going to go there. It was an outlot. We didn't know what was going to go there. So we just specified in the amendment to the permit that the use is going to be for the park and ride.
All right. Thank you, Max.
Sure.
Any other questions? There are none. We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number three, Stormwater Maintenance Agreement, W-21-07 Amendment Number One, TIF 14 KMMP.
Thank you again. So like I mentioned before, same type of agreement. For this project, the city created a TIF district, TIF 14, to encourage industrial development on the south side of the city. And the city developed a stormwater management plan built upon in that area to cover a certain area of the ultimate development. This project is coming on a parcel that's part of the development, the first phase, and is covered until, by this stormwater management permit. When it was designed, we had some criteria which this project meets the criteria and complies with the stormwater management permit. So we did this amendment to again specify, this is what this lot is used for and this is how it will function. So we would recommend approval of the stormwater maintenance agreement. The property owner only has a few structures and stormwater pipe on their property that will discharge to the pond. And we do this agreement. So they maintain their structures and pipes properly over time.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Alderman Allen and Alderman Sternig. Any questions for Max? It was Alderman Berquist. I'm sorry.
That's fine.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number four, Stormwater Maintenance Agreement, W-23-03 Corda Master Development.
Thank you again. Similar to the previous two items, a stormwater maintenance agreement for the property at the northwest quadrant of Paradise Drive and Main Street, the Corda Development. There was master development plan for this area and ultimately three properties because the land has been re-divided with those three properties. So each property has an agreement, even though the design was done for the entire area. Now, because we have three different property owners, that's why we have three agreements on this one. Each property owner has some rights and responsibilities for parts of the stormwater management facilities that were designed and will be installed as part of this project.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
And Alderman Allen and Alderman Sizer, Alderwoman Sizer. Any questions for Max? There are none. We have a motion. Go ahead, Alderman Allen.
So when you said three, that Corda has the block of four stores. There's one outlot being developed for Taco John's, and there's one additional not yet developed outlot. Is that the three property owners you're talking about? Or is Hobby Lobby somehow?
No, this is what you said, Corda, Spirituality, and Brick Small Paradise Pavilion are the three owners of those three different lots that are being developed separately but share the same stormwater management plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? There are none. We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number five, Relocation Order Revision Two, Updated Signature Safety Improvement at Three Intersections Along State Highway 33.
Thank you. This item is one that you have seen twice already, back in February and back in May. Originally, we had an approved plat in February. There were some changes that were made at the end of April, and I had to bring this item back. The changes were minor. It was just some labeling on the plans that was changed. It didn't change the areas of the land that was concerned with the relocation order. I signed the plat at the time I received it with the date when I signed it. And DOT recently informed me that I should have kept the February date, even though I was signing in April. So they asked me to bring it back with the actual February date signature, which is why I'm here again today. So I ask you to approve this relocation order so I can file it with the county.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Alderman Allen, Alderman Sternig, second. Any questions for Max? There are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Max.
Thank you.
There being no further business before the Board of Public Works, I adjourn as Chair.
The Finance Committee has called to order. We have four items on this evening's agenda. The first is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on July 15th. Can I entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Alderman Allen and Alderwoman Sizer. Any questions, comments, additions, deletions? If not, all in favor, please.
Aye.
Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Second item, a resolution accepting donations to the fire department. Welcome, Chief.
Good evening. Thank you. I've got two resolutions. The first of one is a resolution that we're asking you to accept a donation from the Piggly Wiggly store. We were their Roundup Charity of the Month. They made a donation for $2,236.74. That money is allocated to the smoke detector and carbon oxide detector program. We're very fortunate to have that support from one of the local community businesses. And I want to note that it does coincide with this year's fire safety theme for Fire Prevention Week with smoke detectors. So thank you to the Piggly Wiggly.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Other than a great thank you to Fox Brothers Piggly Wiggly. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Third is a resolution accepting additional donations to the fire department.
Thank you. And the second resolution is also donations for the smoke detector and carbon oxide detector programs. Comes in from three private residents, Gerald Joy, Cindy Tomey, and Dwayne Klostermanall that donated $100 to the program. We ask that those funds are accepted and allocated to the fire smoke detector program.
Entertain a motion?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Spartsen, Alderman Allen. Any questions, comments? Other than thank you to these private citizens for those generous donations as well. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The fourth, thank you very much, Chief. Fourth item this evening is a resolution authoriting the transfer of YARC funds for payment of expenses. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, Dan. Thank you. This evening, our department is requesting to transfer $1,200 into YARC fund to an operational expense account for supplies for our Special Olympics program. Currently, there's approximately $28,000 in our Special Olympics, in the YARC fund. That $28,000 is donations, or are donations to that account specifically for Special Olympics. So it's not like a taxpayer tax, you know, fund or anything like that. It was donations specifically for our Special Olympics program, something I just wanted to mention. I'm often up here asking for transfer from those, from that fund. I just wanted to make sure I was communicating enough to the common council that that's where those funds are arriving from, so.
Thank you very much, Mike. Well, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Hey, thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Allen. I'll just keep it at this end of the table. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Mike. And there being no further business before the Finance Committee, I adjourn as Chair.
All call to order. A meeting of the common council of the City of West Bend. It is Monday, August 5th, 2024. More than 24 hours in advance of this meeting. Notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of the meeting was posted in accordance to Wisconsin state statutes. Clerk, can you confirm this meeting was properly posted?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. I invite you to join me in the pledge.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. We recognize the quorum of our full common council here tonight. Our first item of business is approval of our regular meeting minutes from July 15th, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Alderman Allen and second by Alderwoman Sizer. Any comments, questions, corrections? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Couple of presentations tonight, and they are related to each other. But we have Phil Cosson here from Ellers, who's going to kick off a TID, a tax increment district update. And Phil is with Ellers, our financial partner. And so Phil, thank you very much for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mary. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to scare you off with a 49-page presentation to start the meeting. So I will try to get through this relatively quickly, as I have in the past. Some of you have been through this. My goal is to, one, educate. Really, that's what we're here tonight. There's rare for me not to have some action item, but we're going to educate. And then, two, to do so in a way that you don't fall asleep halfway through it. So a lot of material here. We're going to talk about tax increment financing, a little bit about kind of past practice when it comes to debt financing, a little bit about levy limits, and very little about expenditure restraint. But I'll touch on that a little bit at the end as well. So when we put this together, we are asked to... We'll do that. All right. We're asked to give a little bit of, kind of a TIF 101. I know it's, the city's been very active in the use of tax increment financing over the years. I know there's a few new members, council members here tonight as well. So I wanted to kind of start with base building, a little bit about the program, how it works. We do hour-plus presentations on just TIF 101, so I'm going to get through this relatively quick. You could hear me use the word term TIF and TID. TIF is the program run by the Department of Revenue. And TID is an actual boundary that you establish, the City of West Bend's. And onto TID number 16, we'll talk about those in a little bit. It's really the most powerful tool municipalities in Wisconsin have. And I'll talk about, you know, how we use this tool to advance either development, redevelopment-type projects or blight elimination-type projects in the city. So... Just you went, oh, here we go. Okay. One of the key underpinnings of the whole program is but for. And it's really but for the use of TIF would the development occur. And really, when you, when you look at it, what we need to be able to answer within the creation of a district through the project plan and the various resolutions that are approved is whether or not the project would move forward. But we actually try to break that down a little bit more. And we say, would it, would it move forward as proposed at the same timeframe and in the same value? So many times, you'll have a proposal come forward, but you want to see certain enhancements related to that project, maybe underground parking or something like that. And that's where the use of TIF can really come in and be really a good collaborative program that works between the city and the local developer or company. So we really have to answer that but-for test as we go through it. So the but-for test is really critical. And we actually have a variety of counties, Washington County being one of them, that really wants us to really address that but-for issue. So really, what we are looking at to get there is an independent third review of the developer's sources, uses, cash flow, just to make sure there's truly a but-for there. What is the gap? And we're really trying to establish, more than anything else, that there's a gap in financing, a gap in funding for the project. And this tool, TIF, is really used to plug that gap so the project can move forward again as proposed or with the different enhancements that you may be looking at. It's also used for challenged sites. You have a variety of tax increment districts that have been created in and around the downtown that have completely changed the community over a number of decades. So we'll talk about those again in a little bit. Extensive public infrastructure, if you think about, as a, for instance, Milwaukee Tool site, which was an unimproved area, we use TIF to actually put in the infrastructure to support that development. So public infrastructure can be a portion of it. And then, lack of economic development in a community, you know, that's not just, is it going to happen? Or are we going to see something happen? But it can actually be used as a way to kind of address other community issues that you may have, such as, throughout the state of Wisconsin, we have a real shortage of housing. And it can be not just looking at multifamily or a certain type of housing, but it can bring in a type of housing that the community currently isn't serving. So that's another type of use of tax increment financing and why we use that but-for test. The ultimate judgment, whether or not you address this issue, is through what's called the Joint Review Board. That's a member of the school district, county, technical college, the city, and a citizen member. That group has ultimate say whether or not a tax increment district is going to be approved. So we have to go through that process with them. So the power of TIF is really described in these next two slides. When you create a tax increment district, you draw a boundary around parcels. And that is what's called the baseline. So when you create the district, you have established a number of parcels that are going to be included in the district. And the taxes, as they are today, that you collect on that baseline will always be shared with all the taxing bodies. As new development occurs, that's incremental value. And that incremental value stays entirely with the TIF fund. And it can be used to reinvest into your tax increment district. So that incremental value, the increase in property value that you see is really the power of tax increment financing. And it's really shown here. Just say you have a parcel that develops in the city outside of a tax increment district. You would get the taxes on the city portion only. City portion only, maybe around $5 per thousand. In this example, you'll see, because we're using a tax increment district, and the other taxing bodies are going to forego their taxes for the life of the district, you're really using that full mill rate. And you're using, again, retaining those funds from the new development and reinvesting into the tax increment district boundaries. So the power of TIF is really, they're using the full mill rate versus just the city's mill rate. So the intent, I talked about this a little bit already, is really, is to promote primarily economic and redevelopment throughout the city. And really, to promote cooperation between the public and private sector. You have a lot of different developers and businesses that have taken advantage of this within the city. And the city has partnered very well over the years. Not only that, but the city has been very proactive in making sure that you've really addressed that but-for test and, and kind of treat each development roughly the same when it comes to different types of development. So it's really been a useful tool in the city. And it's what Ben wanted to really affect both local industries that are here wanting to stay and expand, and also bringing in outside businesses and developers throughout the last couple of decades. So there's a lot of rules and regulations tied to tax increment financing. One is called the 12% test. And that 12% test is the same no matter if you're Milwaukee or Pittsville, Wisconsin. It's 12% of the total value of the community. And once, if you're under that 12% of the total value, you can create districts and/or you can amend the boundaries of existing districts. Once you're above 12% of the value of the community within tax increment districts, then you're what's called tiffed out, and you don't have the ability to create new districts. The city has never been tiffed out, to my knowledge, and still has plenty of capacity to take on future tax increment districts. So not necessarily a consideration or concern here in the city. The city, or a tax increment district has to be a contiguous area, cannot exceed, extend beyond the boundaries of the, of the city limits. So you can't just grab a couple parcels on the northwest side of the city and the southeast side of the city and say, this is our TIF boundary. It's got to be contiguous. And other requirements and maximum life restrictions apply to each type of tax increment district. So there's a variety of districts that you can, you can create. I think in the city, you have created mixed-use districts, industrial districts, and blight rehab districts. I don't think you've ever done an environmental district at this point. But there are rules tied to each one of these types of districts, and they're kind of spelled out. Really, what you're looking at is 50% threshold for each type of district. So what does that mean? If you are going to create a district that's mixed-use, then you have to have at least 50% of the area has to be a combination of industrial, commercial, and residential uses. And so it has to be a mix of different uses that can be developed in the area. If it's industrial, at least 50% of the area has to be zoned and suitable for industrial purpose and has to remain that way for the life of the district. And if it's either a blight or a rehab district, if you think about some of the districts that have been created downtown, again, you need to make the case that at least 50% of the area, by acreage, not by parcel, has, is in need of either rehab, blight elimination, or conservation. And so this 50% threshold kind of runs through each one of the districts. Newly-planted residential is, I, was probably in about 5% of the districts created. Now it's in about 95% of the districts created. So newly-planted residential has a whole different set of criteria around it. And yet, the city's been somewhat active in the newly-planted residential market under unmixed-use tax increment district. Procedurally, to create a district and/or amend, you need to do a feasibility study, which is a project plan. You have to hold an initial JRB meeting, which is really, again, representatives of all the taxing bodies, school, county, technical college, city. They all have a seat at the table. You have to hold a public hearing, which is held by Plan Commission, not City Council. Governing body has to approve it. That's the actual creation date. And then there's a final Joint Review Board approval. So there's really three approvals required. Plan Commission, City Council, and Joint Review Board. You need approval from all three to create a district. And then there is a submittal to the state of Wisconsin Department of Revenue, and they do a procedural and legal review to make sure that when you create the district, you met all the statutory requirements that are laid out for each district, which in their review, they're not looking at whether or not a development is a good idea or redevelopment's a good idea. They're looking at, did you hold the public hearing? Did you do the proper noticing? You know, they're kind of checking the box through it to make sure that procedurally you done, you made all the right steps. The project plan requirements are listed here. You know, really, there, there's a series of maps that are required. There's cost descriptions. There's development, redevelopment descriptions. There's a cash flow analysis, financing tools, and estimated life of the proposed district. So there's elements that are clearly spelled out in the statute that have to be included within the project plan before you can move forward. One of the questions that we get a lot is what is eligible and what's not eligible to be included in a project plan. So eligibility, there's a big list here. You can see it's pretty much everything that you could think of. Public Works, improvements, administrative, and organizational. That really ties back to, you know, you can charge some administrative costs that are truly tied to the tax increment district. Cash grants, development agreements, financing contributions, either a community development or redevelopment authority, environmental remediation. You could do land write-down, which has really been very useful. You did that, again, with the Milwaukee Tool. that, again, with the Milwaukee Tool Tax Increment District. Relocation costs, and really, an important one, is you could do projects within one half-mile of the district that you can demonstrate have some benefit to the tax increment district. We're going to be bringing TID 16 forward soon, an amendment to TID 16, to include Indiana Avenue to the north. That's outside the actual boundaries of the district, but within a half-mile, and we could demonstrate, right now, cash flow-wise, that that district will be able to support that project. So, in that case, instead of having that be a general levy project, levied against all the different taxpayers, it'll be in the TID fund and paid for the TIF district instead. So, we'll be bringing that forward shortly. And then, you can also do pro-rated share of utility infrastructure as well. So, for instance, if you're building a new business park, and you know there's going to be a lot of uses, you could put a water tower up and have that, at least a portion of that paid by the tax increment district, with the remaining portion being paid through user fees. So, what can't you do? The list is relatively small. Construct or expand municipal buildings, and that goes not just city halls, but fire, police, parks, all are part of that municipal buildings. Facilities financed with user fees, they don't like when you double-dip and have something being paid for with the user fee and also TIF, and then you just bank the money. General government expenses unrelated to TID, and then costs associated with newly-planted residential, again, unless it's in a mixed-use tax increment district, and in many cases, a blight or rehab district, as long as you're not replating land. So, the list of what you can't do is relatively small. It's a pretty flexible program, and I'm talking about the overall TIF program's very flexible. We create a district with our best information available, but you have the ability to amend the boundaries. So, you can amend the boundaries up to four times through the life of the district, again, as long as you're overall are under that 12% test. And again, the property has to be contiguous to the existing property in the district. That's four times you could do a boundary amendment. You can do a plan amendment, which is just changing the project plan or revenue sharing as often as you want to see me, because I'm usually here doing the tax increment district. So, you could do that. So, TID 16, when I talked about that, we're not actually looking to amend the boundaries. We're going to actually just include that as a project that's eligible to be paid out of the TID fund, as opposed to amending the actual boundaries. So, you have a lot of flexibility. The downside is, you have to go through the same steps when you do an amendment as you do when you're doing a creation. So, there's some work involved. Maximum life, get this question on a regular basis, how often, how long can you keep it open? Well, there's, again, statutory requirements of when you have to close a district, either a 20-year, 27-year TIF, or, once you have collected enough revenue to pay off all the obligations in the tax increment district, you're legally required to close out the district at that point. So, you can't just keep a district open, bank the money, and be in a situation where like, "Well, maybe something will come up in the future." You have to kind of live by that. Ad closure, there's really a benefit. There's a benefit to under levy limits. So, you get not only net new construction, but you also get a bump under levy limits when you close out a tax increment district, as well as, you will see a small drop in the mill rate at the same time, and there may be some project or some TID funds left in the account that can be distributed to all the taxing bodies. So, there is benefit to closing out a district as well, and you're kind of weighing, you know, those two. Do we keep it open and get more projects done, or do we close the districts out and try to take advantage of some levy capacity that every community is looking for? There are some extensions that are available to you as well. I'm not going to, you know, touch on each one of these, but there's a variety of extensions. There's a four-year extension that's very simple. If you can demonstrate you don't have enough revenue at the life of the, end of the district, you are, then you have the ability to amend the district and keep it open. There's also something called the Technical College Amendment. When they changed the funding levels for technical colleges, we have the ability, back in 2014, you could do an amendment there as well. So, you can really amend for up to seven years and extend the life of the district. But again, you have to take it to the Joint Review Board for their approval to make sure you do that. So, I'm working through these pretty quick. Initial questions, or I'll keep rolling?
Yeah, Phil, you talked about that closure. Isn't there also an ability at closure, when you close, to extend the district for, I think it's one year?
Yep.
To do projects, you can do low-income housing projects and things that benefit low-income householders out as part of the TID. How does that exactly work?
Same procedure. You would close out the district, and then let the DOR know that you're going to collect increment one more year for the affordable housing extension. So, it's ad closure, that you could keep it open one additional year. There are, I would say that at least 50% of the communities are using that tool now to try to keep, you know, to build a fund to deal with some affordable housing issues. The nice thing about the affordable housing extension is you can use it really citywide. It's not tied to the area that the district was. So, it can be used in a way that is really effective for the community. You can really target areas and/or target developments that really need support.
Can that money, does that money have to be spent entirely within that one year?
No. No, you have a window of time. You have, you know, what most communities have done is they've done a housing study to determine what the needs are of the community first, and then they kind of roll that into whatever programs they're looking at. But, no, you're not required to spend it that quickly.
All right. Thank you.
So, any other questions? Best practices? You know, we try very hard to be really conservative when we create tax increment districts, yet, things happen. You know, 2008, '09, '10 happened with a real estate downturn. Nobody really saw that coming. So, there are ways you can effectively mitigate some of the risk. One is sensitivity analysis, this kind of taking the development assumptions and kind of reducing those, pulling them back, and making sure that it still works at a reduced development level. I wouldn't say we ever really do a worst-case scenario, because I don't know what that is, but we try to do some sensitivity analysis as we talk through it. Really, we try to make sure that we're matching expenses with the debt service and revenues, and really, one way to do that is really to take a tax increment district and try to break it up into phases. So, you're not too far ahead of the development. The reality, though, is for any new tax increment district, you are going to be in the hole right away. And the reason for that is, to create a district, you have costs already. So, just say you create a new district in '25, you have costs to create the district that you're putting into the tax increment district, and yet, development, even if it happened in '25, first get valued in '26, and you collect revenue in '27. You have a two-year gap, no matter what, between expenses. So, then it's a matter of how do you mitigate that, and how do you deal with those issues, and we work closely with staff to do that. We can't fully eliminate risk. I mentioned the economic cycles. There's also changes in the TID law that happen every biennial budget. We do a lot of blocking, not much tackling, but a lot of blocking, I'll say, to try to keep the law, keep the TID program as intact and flexible as we can, but there are legislators out there that would like to see the program really limited. And then, quite frankly, you know, you can do a lot of due diligence on developers and businesses, but, you know, private party performance is a lot of times nothing to do with the city. You know, it's the natural cycle of business. So, you can try to put as many protections in as possible, but there are some risks always. So, you know, one of the, a lot of the considerations, and the city does a really good job with this, under what circumstances will TID be used? And again, I don't think you've been, if I will, old-school, willy-nilly in your use of TIF. It's really been centered really around a development or a project, and that's why you brought it forward. You know, there's a process to request assistance. You know, you'd never want to negotiate against yourself, so you want to have the developer or company come forward and say, "This is what we're looking for, and this is why," and you still want to vet that term. Some communities just say, "Look, we're not going to keep a district open 27 years just because. We want it closed out earlier than that." You can do a pro forma review. We've done that here in the city, where you have an independent review of the developer's pro forma to make sure that you are just plugging that gap. And, you know, we expect them to make a rate of return, a decent rate of return, and why would they do it otherwise? But, you don't want to enrich them. And then, another is really pays-ago versus traditional, where we've seen the biggest switch in the TIF practice over the years, where they, a developer puts in a development, and they get money back as, after the development has been put in place and is generating new taxes. And then, a portion of that comes back through a development agreement. And of course, community goals always play into this as well. You know, many, many, a couple decades ago, when downtown was really struggling, the city got very proactive in dealing with downtown through TIDS 5, and 9, and 11, and through a variety of tax increment districts downtown. So, when is an incentive provided? It really varies, and these are not mutually exclusive. You could have, really, the city actually be a significant upfront provider of incentives to get some things moving, that pays-ago concept where they get money back over time, and really, quite frankly, most deals have both of that within it. So, we'd like to push as much as we can to pays-ago. They only get paid if they're successful, but in some cases, you need to provide some money upfront to make it work. Here's a challenge. You know, enforcing development agreements, we could put the greatest development agreements in place. With a lot of security provisions, you still have to collect. And no city wants to be in the position where you have to knock on the door of a local business and say, "We're here to collect," because you didn't do X. That's not the position you want to be in. So, you're trying to figure out ways to provide security to the city, but not harm a local business. So, these are some options: letters of credit, value guarantees, shortfall payments, special assessments. The city has really used a lot of these tools pretty effectively, but, I'm not going to mention names, one of the wealthiest people in the state of Wisconsin, we've had a hard time collecting from on various deals. So, it's, just because somebody has a lot of money doesn't mean they want to write you checks if they don't fulfill what their responsibility is. So, you need to do your best early on in the security provisions, and then monitor those along the way and work with them to make sure that the city is made whole over time. So, as I said, the city's been very active in the tax increment district world. I'll talk about each one of these in a very brief snapshot, and I tried, I think Mark Beck used to give me the actual names of these instead of what I would put in. East Side, I think everybody knows where that is on TID number 16. I drove by there coming in because I had not been by there, couldn't get through. So, that's good news, I think. That means development's happening, and the road is being put in. But, you have been very active in the tax increment district world. One of the things that we always look at is, you know, your outstanding obligations as it pertains to all of your tax increment districts collectively. Now, this is existing debt that's outstanding. It doesn't necessarily mean existing obligations. There may be shortfall payments that are part of this, advances that have been made, but if you look at the debt that's tied here, you can see it's declining. It's about 3.1 million overall in '24, and it drops off as debt matures on some of your districts close out. But, rest assured, never thought I'd see the day, but TID 5 and 9 are close to being paid off. Those are the downtown districts that had been kind of a slow process to be successful. They're slowly going to be paid off. TIDS 4 and 6 are contributing to 5 and 9. They have no outstanding debt anymore, so a lot of this debt is falling off over time. But, fully acknowledge that there'll be some additional obligations taken out for some of the districts in the future, I'm sure. So, big picture. You've been very successful with TIF, and hot off the presses as of last Thursday. The Department of Revenue comes out on 8/1 of every year with new equalized value numbers and new increment values for every tax increment district, and then also your net new construction number and a few other items as well. So, last Thursday and Friday, this is all the numbers nerds like me just kind of geeked out and was seeing what happened in all these districts. So, this is a quick, really big-picture summary. Overall increment increase as a collective from 425 million to 463 million. That's substantial in that this is the first year that personal property has been removed from tax increment districts. So, even with personal property being removed, you actually saw decent growth in the overall tax increment districts. TID 5 and 9 shortfalls made up with revenues from 4 and 6, likely through '29. We have a pretty detailed analysis that, and I'll show you that in a little bit, that shows the general fund and the sewer utility being reimbursed back still for some advances that were being made, which is good to be on the other side of that equation. And the sewer fund and the general fund will see a significant amount of money coming back. TID number 10, available TID funds covered recent shortfalls. It's a negotiated development agreement you have with Hendrick's Group, and I think it's still Hendrick's Group, right? Yep, Hendrick's Group, thank you. And I think that's just going to play out over time. 11 and 13 have modest shortfalls. Continue in TID 11, but new development in 13 that has taken place has really eliminated any shortfalls. So, that's good news. So, everything else is really working. TID 14 increment increase, although, you know, that's primarily Milwaukee Tool, and there was a revaluation that occurred there, done by the estate, and dropped that value. So, we expect the new development being proposed out there and happening out there will eliminate future shortfalls. And then, the note at the bottom, you know, that the reduction in debt payments tied back to the TIDS, an increase in TID revenues will allow, again, the general fund and the sewer utility to get reimbursed back over time. So, that's really flexibility and good news for the city that a lot of communities wish they had, and here's what it looks like. I know there's, I'm sorry, there's a lot of numbers on a lot of pages, and they're small, so... But, if you look at this, this is really focused in on four TIDS, 4, 5, 6, 9, primarily, because 5 and 9 were downtown, primarily downtown area. 4 and 6 were very successful districts that have a revenue sharing agreement that runs between them. And you can see on here that there's both sewer advance and TIF 5 and 9 general fund advances that are going to be paid off from 2025 through 2029, and then '29 and maybe 28 will be able to close out TIDS 4, 5, 6, and 9 at that point, hopefully by '28. And then, TID 3 had some general fund and sewer advances that are going to be paid back as well. So, there's a, this is great news for the city that there is flexibility, is what I'll call it, money coming back from previous advances to the tax increment district over the next five to six years that can be, you know, re-employed elsewhere in the city for both general fund and sewer projects. So, this is great news. But, we monitor this annually, working with your finance team as well. So, let's talk about each one of these districts. I'm not going to spend a lot of time walking through each one of these. I'm going to just tell you when it was created, the type of district, if there's an agreement, and then, the current incremental value. So, TID number 3 in the east side of town, it was started as the Saragraf Tax Increment District, and then, north of the river, the Wingate Creek and Hurricane areas were added. But, this was created back in '95. It's a 27-year TIF. Don't get, I heard distress freaked out some people. It was the allowed extension of tax increment districts that took... It was, it was the allowed extension of tax increment districts that took, that were put in place back to address the 2008, nine and 10 downturn. It's no longer an option, but it was distressed to add additional years. And you can see the amendments when they took place, there's 30, almost 8 million in value. And again, the developer made shortfall payments and the agreement calls for them to get reimbursed back. And we're in that cycle now. They get reimbursed back and then the city will be reimbursed back for advances that have been made through the general fund and the sewer utility. TID four, West Bend Corporate Center has been very successful, almost 100 million in value out there. Again, it's a donor district for five and nine, created in 97. Continental Properties was the partnership at that time. TID five, which is the Wisconsin Street Depot area, was created back in 98. Things were really doing well there. Then again, the downturn happened. Here we also extended this tax increment district by 10 years through that distressing. We hopefully don't need it all. Again, I'm looking at about 28 when this district can close out, not, not 35. And again, about 17, almost 18 million of incremental value has been created out there. Very successful Menards Paradise Drive area district. Again, this is sharing revenue with five and nine, almost $66 million of value in that area as well. Eastside Industrial Park, TID number seven, you can see it's about 23 million in value out there, created back in 99. Again, we expect this district will close out likely, you know, next year or the year after. So it's, it's coming quick. TID number nine, again, this was a, a district that was created to deal with, you know, Veterans Avenue Auxiliary Court area. There's been a lot that has occurred in this district, even though there's only 4.2 million of incremental value. We do have properties out there like the museum as such that don't pay taxes, but they pay a pilot payment back to the, to the tax increment district. So while there's only 4.2 million of incremental value, there are pilot payments, payment in lieu of tax payments that come back to the city as well to help with this district as well. River Shores, TID number 10, Hendrix Development Group again is, is tied here, about 63 million in value. Again, this will just play out over a number of years until all the debt is paid off. But if, if a little more development occurs out there, we expect that this district could close out well early of its allowed life. River Road Industrial Park, it was a partnership with Crowell Camp Company. Again, 30.4 million in value created in '05. It really developed nicely for the first five, six years. And again, the downturn really kind of took its toll on this district for about three years when nothing happened. But we have 30 million in value and things are kind of looking up in TID 11. Gale Company, TID 12, 72 million in value in the Gale Company Tax Increment District. This is doing very well. And we expect we'll close out well early of its allowed life as well. TID 13, the former Amity Leather Goods? Did I get that right? Site. This again was a partnership with Crowell Camp and Saragaf, 6.3 million in value out here. This district, you know, kind of teeters, I'll call it, you know, there's, there's some good years and some years were a little bit short, but this will be able to get reimbursed back over, over the life of the district as well and end up in the black. West Bend Manufacturing Center, I talked about Milwaukee Tool already. There's room to develop out there. There's projects moving forward. We expect this district will be very successful. It's at incremental value of about 11 million. The HKS Downtown Riverfront Development, I need to get by there and see what it looks like as well. But the existing incremental value went from 10 million to 32 million so, in one year. So that is substantial. And that 32 million is as of what happened the end of 2023. So if anything occurred in '24, wrapping up the development, that's not shown in here. That 32 million gets them to the, where they need to get to as far as valuation per the agreement. So here we don't expect to have any, any concerns in that the, really the incentives are being paid to them over time. This helped pay for, some of this helped pay for a portion of the Riverwalk and helped pay for a portion of the Main Street improvement as well. TID 16, Eastside Redevelopment, where I tried to drive through. We do have incremental value of $5 million. There are multiple developments moving forward. We expect this district to do very well. Our initial cash flows show this being really strong, which is why we are looking at amending this to pick up Indiana Avenue to the north as well. So I'll catch my breath for a second. Does anybody have any questions on any of the districts? Nope. Few glazed overlooks, but I'll move forward. All right. So final impact of Ted, a financial impact of TID closure, I touched on this already, but three, four, five, six, seven and nine, we think are all going to close out roughly the same time, 2027, 28, 26, somewhere in there. And really what it does is, and I mentioned this earlier, it allows the city to increase the, the levy limit above the normal net new construction number. That's important because that gives you that little bump that you need every once in a while in a city to, to meet your expenditures. So those will be important years when those districts do close out that you really take a, take a look at the, the, the impact of the TID closure and try to take advantage of that as much as possible. And then we'll see a continued reimbursement of the sewer and general fund for the next number of years will just, will help both the sewer and general fund over time. So that's what I had for you on tax increment financing. Before I jump into debt and debt management, any questions? All right, hearing none. I will talk a little bit about your debt and debt management. Current practice, it's not necessarily policy, but practice. It's been the practice of the city over the last decade almost to reduce the amount of overall debt burden, and you've been doing that. It's been substantial that you have reduced the amount of debt that is outstanding. And really the way you have done that is really you've borrowed 3 million annually for general capital projects, yet you're paying off more than that annually. So that's how you've really addressed that issue, is you've been paying down more principal than what you have been borrowing on an annual basis. So the other is to keep your debt burden at less than 50% of the allowed. I'll show you a chart a little bit of where you are. You're nowhere near the 50%. You're probably closer to about 25% or less than that, about 20%. So you're well under that 50% threshold. Take any advantage of refunding opportunities. I said not applicable at this time until the last two days of the stock market. And we do think in potentially short term, we're going to maybe be able to bring a few refundings forward to certain communities. You know, rates have really dropped over the last week and we continue to see, if we see that correction continue for a little while, that there's the possibility of bringing some refundings. Refundings as simple as like your home mortgage. If you take your home mortgage and you're at 6%, you can refinance it at four. It's the same concept for a city debt. We come back with a number to try to save some money either to the TID, general fund or utilities. And then preserve flexibility under levy limits by limiting the use of debt allowance. More on this later on. You're one of few that actually have a lot of capacity still on your debt allowance. And I'll talk about that in a little bit. So we build a base case and then we build off of that your capital plan and we update that on a regular basis. And there's a lot of numbers again, I apologize, but correctly, I was told that our math is incorrect here on this page. And the reason being we are, what you don't see in here is it's reading off a 23 base year. I hid, I hid that column, but I didn't change it. So if you really focus on the third column from the right where it says taxes, annual taxes on a $350,000 home, this is debt service. This is your debt levy and not the operating budget, but your debt levy annually. So it's $310 on an average home with $350. It stays that way in '25 and '26, and then it really drops off. And that drop off is when you're going to try to absorb essentially a new, some more significant new capital projects to take advantage of that drop off. But you can see that you're about 90 cents per thousand for debt service levy and then, and then it'll start really dropping off over the next number of years. Any questions on that chart? That's what you are, that's where you are today before you take on any new projects. All right. So we were asked to put together a capital project list from 2025 through '29. It, it takes essentially your annual capital borrowing to about 4 million a year. Instead of that 3 million, it takes you to 4 million a year. Again, this is just, you know, modeling. We can modify this very quickly and easily. So that's what you see in '25, '27, '28 and '29 in those years. There's one outlier in 2026, which is really the fire station project. And I jumped to that fire station project to show you the impact of just that because of, we were told that, that this may be of interest to the group. It's substantial, the fire station project. And you can see what this boils it down to is that average homeowner again. On the bottom highlighted in yellow is essentially what it would mean to that $350, $350,000 homeowner for the fire station over the life of that debt. And it equates to about $2,200. So that's for the average homeowner. And it pulls it into a number that's hopefully understandable for people of what it really costs. So that is the debt service payments above and beyond what you're paying right now over the whole life of that debt issue of what it comes down to for that average homeowner. It's about $2,200. Jay, you got a question?
So like 100 a year, right?
Yep, 100 a year roughly. Correct. So I just wanted to put it in a number that made some sense for the group because a lot of times you see all these numbers on the page and kind of go, what does this even mean? This tax rate for debt service, et cetera. Well, when you bring it down to a number that's more understandable for people, so you're right, about $100 a year is what it would end up being for the average homeowner in the, in the city. So going back to the overall capital plan, when you look at your existing obligations and all the, those, those subsequent years, '25, '27, '28 and '29, where you're doing your normal capital, if you look at that same number, I didn't highlight it in yellow this time, it's about $3,600 for the life of the issue. So it's what I try, again, trying to get it to a number that's understandable. That takes into account that $4 million borrowing every year for capital plus the fire station. This is the whole CIP through 2029. Okay? So it does increase that debt service levy a little bit. So you can see it takes it from about 90 cents right now to about a dollar 27, a dollar, sorry, dollar 28 per thousand. But again, if you want to really analyze what it means, it's about $3,600 for the average homeowner to do all the projects that are identified. Now, what do we have in here to, to better understand some of the assumptions that we have made in here? We have relatively conservative interest rates that we have used for all the subsequent borrowings, higher than where you can borrow the money today. So that's built into there. So that's a conservative assumption. We are using 50% of the growth rate that you have seen over the last five years. So we're not trying to, you know, make this look as good as possible. It's quite the opposite. We're taking a couple of conservative assumptions on top of each other and it's still at these levels. And then also it doesn't include any potential refinancing of debt down the road. So we think pretty conservative when you look at those three different assumptions that we've used. We're using as far as the interest rate on, on these, 4.5% for the 10-year issues and 5% for the 20-year issue. Right now you can borrow money at about 375 for those. So again, pretty conservative when we look at what we're using for assumptions. So that's the CIP that we have been asked to model out. And then also again, just the fire station to give you an idea of what that project looks like over the life of the district. I mentioned early on debt server, our debt limit analysis, that was one of the practices that you wanted to stay under 50%. Currently you're at about 22% of your debt limit. And even with all the borrowings that we're talking about, it takes you to about 27% of your capacity, well under the 50%, meaning you have a lot of flexibility in the future to, to deal with the projects, other projects in the future that you may have that, you know, we just don't know about at this point. So well under that, that threshold that you have identified as well. So I think bottom line, when I kind of look at all the items related to capital planning and related to debt practice, one, you're pretty conservative for a community this size borrowing three to $4 million a year. That's, that's very conservative. Nothing wrong with that, but just letting you know. Two, you're well under your threshold for debt limit. And three, I think almost as important, you're going to have other money coming in through the, the reimbursement from tax increment districts, coming back to payback advances that'll provide you again, some flexibility to deal with budgetary issues in the future as well. So really positioned very well going forward. And you're on that, quite frankly, you're on the tail end of some of these tax increment districts. So you're going to see those closures come in as well, which will, which will help a great deal. So let me talk a little bit about levy limits. This is probably the most confusing topic for most people out there. One thing that we know right now, there's, you know, information kind of leaks out of the DOR, came out again last Thursday. It's not final until the 15th, so it's still preliminary. But your net new construction number is 1.24%. How it compares to previous years, you're at 0.823 in '21, 1.94 in '22, 1.48 in '23 and 1.24 this year. It's about 275,000 roughly. That's about what you're going to be able to increase your levy by under levy limits this coming year is about 275,000. You don't have any TIDS closing out at this point, so you're not going to get that additional bump beyond that until you actually see the closure. So that's a number that is out there and available. And why is that important? Because, you know, the operating budget is really subject to levy limits. So when you look at your operating budget and you start talking about where we're going to go with our budget, really what the DOR is telling you through net new construction under levy limits is you can increase it by about 275,000. Now, what's not included in there is any debt issues. So you have the ability to issue general obligation debt and that's outside of the levy limit calculation. It's an adjustment. There's about 16, 17 adjustments on the levy limit worksheet, and this is one of them. And this is probably the most widely, this is the most widely used by municipalities. So you do have the ability to increase your levy by outstanding debt service that you truly are levying. There's a distinction there. It's not just debt service you have, but debt service you're actually levying for. So that's not part of levy limits. And again, that, that number can fluctuate greatly. The city for many years did not take any levy debt adjustment, and you do take a small adjustment over the last couple of years. And why that's important is because you actually have about 2.4 million of unused levy capacity. That's, that's, I don't give this presentation and say that very often. Most Wisconsin communities will say, our, our debt adjustment levy unused capacity is zero because they're levying to the max. And they are because they need to to kind of get there. You've had very conservative budgets over the years and you have capacity, which is really unusual for most communities. Again, puts you in a great position to address all kinds of issues that a lot of communities can't address in the future. So it really gives you flexibility, which is really the most important thing for a municipality. So the other thing I wanted to mention, there is another key in here, and that is expenditure restraint. And they kind of work off of each other a little bit, net new construction and expenditure restraint. Expenditure restraint is just that, how much can you Expenditure restraint is just that, how much can you increase your expenditures? We won't know that number for a couple more months. Right now, it's trending. We track it every month. It's really CPI plus something, I should remember, I can't offhand. But it's, you're at about 3.2% right now. I think that number will move up a tad in the last two months, but I expect it to be in that 3% to 3.5% range. And that really is also another budgetary consideration. How much can you increase your actual expenditures by as part of your budget process? So when they're bringing out a budget forward, it's, they're looking at, you know, last year's levy, they're looking at net new construction, they're looking at expenditure restraint. All that plays into it as you start working through the budget process. Man, it took longer than I thought. All right, questions?
Go ahead, elderman.
Elderman, all.
Yeah. Will you be providing the presentation to us? Because it's a lot to remember.
Yeah. It's already in the right hands for that.
As Phil was saying, these numbers that he showed you literally just came out Thursday afternoon. I know Phil and Jay and Jess were updating slides yet today because it's kind of hot off the press information, but the slides are available. Yes, we'll make sure we send them out to everybody.
Yeah, you've heard me say it over and over, but I'm going to say it one more time. Financially, you know, I work for a lot of municipalities around the area and throughout the state, and you're really in a good position. Not only do you have advances coming back from TIP, you have capacity under levy limits. And that combination is really critical financially to be able to deal with unknowns that are out there for municipalities all the time. So you are in a really good financial position, and that really speaks to the staff that you have and also, you know, previous councils that have gone through conservatively and budgeted as well. So leave you on a high note.
Any other questions? Phil, that was great. Thank you very much. Thanks again for being here tonight, and we'll make sure everybody gets these slides. Great information. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
All right. Our next presentation is the 2025 City of West Bend Budget Discussion.
Is it in presentation mode? Yeah, I, okay. We'll just go with this, I guess.
Can you, you can put the swap display on the tab?
Me? It's already up on my, oh, you want me to aim up there? I don't know what button you want me to push.
So.
That one.
There you go.
So now it looks that way.
For you.
Yeah, that's okay.
All right.
Hey, well, I'll say thanks to Phil on his way out. Thank you, Phil. Phil's presentation is something that we added for city councils as part of our budget process a few years ago and has really been well received. Some of you have seen that show many times. I still find it valuable, and I've been doing this for a long time. So it is a lot of positive education. And it tees up some of the conversation that we're going to have over the next few months regarding our 2025 budget, which is kicking off tonight. So this is a list of stated budget goals for 2025, how we are going to attempt to continue our current level of exceptional services that the city of West Bend provides. We run a very lean operation. We saw some significant staff reductions over the years. I would say 10-ish years ago, we saw significant staff reductions and reduction in levy, Phil mentioned, or in borrowing. Phil mentioned $3 million, that that's a conservative number. Less than 10 years ago, we were borrowing way less, way less than that even in the million and a half at times to $2 million. So we've grown to the $3 million over the last few years, and now we're probably going to have a conversation about growing that again. But those conservative years have allowed us some potential flexibility for the future. But you should know that the department head team around here does a lot with what they have, and they do a great job providing, again, exceptional services. We're going to continue to plan for the fire station replacement, FS1. That's in the works, and we'll continue to move forward with that plan. Spending on roads, additional spending on roads. We discussed it as a council and staff last time you guys met, had a chance to talk about the possibility of adding a million dollars, so moving our $3 million up to $4 million. We'll talk about that a little bit more tonight. And if that's possible to accomplish in 2025's budget. Use an appropriate amount of net new construction. I'm, I'll tell you right up front, I'm going to recommend using the entire $275,000 of net new construction. We had a modest increase allowed to us this year based on our net new construction. We certainly grew, but not to the extent that we did in the last couple of years. But still a significant number, 275, is a envious number for many municipalities to be able to grow to just to maintain their levels of service. So know that that will be coming in with a recommendation to spend that amount. And the reason, maybe for some newer aldermen to our team, I have that as a stated goal is you don't have to spend your net new construction. You could leave some money on the table, and we have done that as an organization in previous years. Strategically, it made sense to do in order to maintain some of the levy limits and expenditure restraints goals and marks that we've needed to hit over time. We might have left some dollars on the net new construction table. We've also afforded a look back provision. We've looked back and taken those over the years, over the last couple of years as well. So we don't have any money in our look back area, and we will likely be recommending, I will be recommending using the full amount of the net new construction available to us. Did highlight the fact that we have some pending police and fire personnel requests. This isn't shocking news to any of you, but important news. The McMahon study that was completed for the fire department staffing, we were able to complete the first nine additional members. The study called for more, and since then, we've been in serious conversations with the village of Kewaskam and some surrounding towns. Chief and I just had a positive meeting with the village and some surrounding town elected leaders this past week. It sounds like that's something that is going to continue to move forward. We'll need those additional firefighters to assist in that area as well. They will be contributing, so it's not, this isn't a, on the city of West Bend taxpayer situation. They will be contributing to the addition of the nine firefighters as well. And that's a negotiation and formula that we're working on right now with the village of Kewaskam and the other towns. And then in police, Chief Daring has had pent up demand within his department for some additional officers. Three additional dispatchers are going to be recommended from Chief in this budget as well. And then the addition of a canine officer. So some officers that have been probably needed for the last couple of years, but Chief's been really respectful about the timing of that. He'll have a chance to speak at a future meeting regarding that, but just know that that's coming as well, that those personnel requests cannot be put off any longer and will be brought to you in 2025. We do have a tiered compensation plan to, similar to the McMahon study, complete the McGrath Compensation Plan that was completed in 2021 and implemented in 2022. Part of that plan, and I did attach it in a memo to you all on Friday, if you had a chance to peek at it, part of that plan that we were able to bring longtime tenured employees, many of the department head team falls into that category just to the start rate in 2022, and that isn't where they should be. They should be at market based on their tenure and their value to the city of West Bend. This two-year plan brings them to market with half of the increase budgeted for in 2025, and then committing to the second half of that budget in 2026. And we're convinced that we can make that situation much better and appropriate for our employees. Cost of living increase, and then just a note regarding the continued GFOA budget goal. I'll just buzz through. Stop me if you have questions, or we can certainly talk and answer any questions at the end.
On the previous page, could you present both a one-year catch-up and a two-year catch-up option with the budget so that we have some idea? Because one of my concerns would be inadvertently disincentivizing people that all of a sudden find out they're not getting dealt with for two years instead of at the same time. So if you could just provide both those numbers.
So anything is possible, and the providing of those numbers is possible. That would create, that request would create us basically drafting two separate budgets. So I guess if that's the consensus of this group to do that, that's one thing. Or if there's, I know it's a tough question to answer at this time. We have no idea what the number is going to be, what we're recommending, how much of an increase. I can share with you that this is a 2025 budget that will be recommending a tax increase for all of the reasons that are listed on this budget goal page. It's up to the mayor if you want to have that conversation now, or you want me to keep rolling through, and you can have it more in a bit.
Yeah, we have an item on, we have an item on our agenda here after consent to talk about the McGrath Compensation Study. Do you want to wait till then?
I think that makes sense.
Okay, why don't we do that? Thanks.
Some stated challenges, infrastructure, dark store continues to linger. Our capital improvement plan has way more demand than it has available funding. You heard a little bit about that from Phil. And then TID on levy, we'll talk about each of those in some more detail. The city infrastructure sustainability plan that the county created with our engineering team a couple of years ago, we're proposing to bring a budget before you that adds an additional million dollars, so taking us from an overall $3 million borrow to a $4 million borrow with $3 million dedicated to roads, so to make significant change or meaningful movement on road improvements. Fire station will be in the design and bid stage throughout 2025. Talked a little bit about that already. We're already going through due diligence and have those processes in place on the land that we are pursuing. The water and sewer special projects continued. I list those. One's very visible right on Main Street, and then the phosphorus reduction project and the sewer utility, both of those will be continuing in 2025. And then just a note that we are planning to spend, we were planning to spend it all in 2024, but based on some costs of where the roads came in, we will have some remaining funds available from the ARPA funding of the 3.3, which is our total allotment, will be spent on roads in 2025. It'll be earmarked in 2024, which is the requirement and has to be spent by the end of '26. I'm confident in this instance, we will have it spent by the end of 2025. Kilborn, the first phase of Kilborn is a very significant project, and Max is already working on creating a budget plan to show the spending of the remaining funds on that street. Dark store has been with us for a long time. The dark store issue is really maybe highlighted by the second bullet. Walmart has pursued us for a number of years, with all of those tax years are stacked up in a court case. They did have a sale of their property take place in 2019 already. It was a long time ago. We think that that significant sale puts a positive spin on where the city will land in court and that we will be, we will win and not have to make a significant payback. But it is definitely a potential challenge if a court were to rule against the city and the other taxing entities and have to pay back those taxes that we received over the years would be significant, especially in the Walmart situation. Two of them on there have settled. The Menards one is maybe old news. I had that as a discussion item last year with their building expansion. The building expansion is now underway, and they have not challenged us for this year, which is good news. And then Home Depot, I say settled this year. It just settled in court just this year, so just a couple months ago. Positive news in that instance to Jeff and Amy, our dark store attorney did a great job defending, and Ian was certainly involved, defending the city in that instance to make that one go away, which remains, just leaves us with two more situations. The freighter property tax lawsuit has four years that they're suing us for, and then Cedar Community is not exactly a dark store lawsuit. It's more of an exemption of property for nonprofit, and that one is one that we continue to work with Amy Seibel on as well, with both of them. So stay tuned on those items. The CIP in 2024, that $3 million CIP you can see shows a much larger number than that, 7.3. Really fortunate to be able to knock off some additional projects. Talked about the $2 million to roads. It's not stated up there, but another million for all of the other departments. The 1.9 million of ARPA money that was dedicated in 2024, some of which will be shifted over to 2025. And then we were fortunate to be able to do an additional $2 million worth of road reconstruction, actually road construction, and expanding Sand Drive from a rural segment to a full-on residential setting. And that road is almost ready to be opened any second now. Exciting news on that part. And that became available because of the TID, because of the TID 16 creation. So we're creative when we can to improve our roads outside of the normal borrowing. And I think I talked about those other three bullets. The prioritization of the needs throughout the rest of the organization probably is not, should have some words on it. It's not an easy project process. That $1 million that's remaining for all of the other departments is very competitive. The department heads are very respectful with each other. They do a great job of prioritizing their needs and only request the absolute need for 2025, even though their list of needed items is much larger than that. We end up shifting those, and you'll get a chance to see that five-year plan as we work through it with our department head team. Tid, I don't know that you want any more information on Tid after Phil's presentation, but I thought he did a great job. I don't think there's anything new there that you haven't heard from already. Maybe just the last bullet, that we do have some early discussions about an additional TID opportunity. We have those on again, off again with developers, and as those come to us in the right timing, we share them. But just know that we're always on the lookout for the right next TID opportunity. We created two in back-to-back years, skipped 2022, and then created TID 16 in early '23. And as of now, we have not created one in 2024. But that flurry of creating three TIDs in four years was after a 10-year hiatus of not creating or really discussing any new TID in West Bend. So really positive news on the development front, economic development front in West Bend. Next steps with the budget. Our department head teams and their budget staff are actively working on the budgets. They're actually due to the finance department at the end of this week. We will continue to work on the CIP. We have a meeting scheduled this week with our department head team that have CIP requests. And then I put the SAFER grant application in there as part of the nine firefighters. We did apply, Chief and his team applied for a SAFER grant to fund those firefighters for the next three years if we're fortunate enough to receive that grant. It's a very highly competitive. I don't want to give the impression that we're for sure going to get it, but it would be, it would be Christmas if we were able to receive it. So it's something that will shout from the rooftops if and when we receive, positive word. Health insurance premiums is just, they don't come to us as of yet. That's a timeline thing. And then know that the October 7th date, circle that on your calendar, is the budget presentation where you'll have the first cut at the budget, and then opportunity to communicate with department heads or ask any questions that you might have of them then and after. So prefer not to have any surprises on November 7th. If there's something that is uneasy to any of you, please reach out to Kerry, myself, any department head, and we'll be able to provide information and more clarity. We'll have that second meeting in October to have additional conversations as well or answer any questions as a group that you might have at the October 21st meeting. And then ideally, we're bringing the capital projects for approval at that time, too. So we really have that set going into the November 11th meeting. That's all I have. If you have any questions, we can try to answer them at this time.
Any questions?
No questions, but just one comment, and this is directed at the council, and it's take advantage of the time you have now leading up to the October 7th budget presentation to reach out to, whether it be Jay or Jess, or Kerry, or any of the department heads regarding what their budgets are looking like, what their what their budgets are looking like, what their needs are. And many of you have had ongoing discussions with department heads as you've been oriented in, in the council. But if there are, there are projects that, that you believe should be of a priority or you've got questions of projects that you think might be on their list of needs for this next year, take the opportunity now to have those discussions with them. And then I'll reiterate what, what Jay said after that October 7th budget presentation. That time period between then and budget adoption in early November is that time to have conversations and difficult conversations if need be, asking questions about budget items so that when we are together again to finalize and approve that agenda in November, there are no surprises. And I've been fortunate, having been on the council now for the second year, that, that has been a relatively smooth process. And everybody has taken that opportunity and been responsible about having those conversations, either with Jay, Jess, Kerry, or any of the department heads who are here or not here tonight, to prepare and make sure that we are, we are aligned on what that budget should look like for the next year.
That's well said, Matt. I'm sure you all get hit up by constituents asking, why isn't there a sidewalk over in whatever street?
Wildwood.
Wildwood. I went to lunch today and a woman asked me, why don't we have handicap parking stalls in front of the labyrinth garden? It all costs money and, and that's what our department heads are trying to put together right now. And, you know, I'm not necessarily saying you should advocate for your own individual districts, but think about those communications that you have with your constituents and ask the question of, is this on the list? Will it ever be on the list? Where does it fall within priorities? The $1 million in, in other capital could be anything from a lawnmower to a plow truck to a squad car to a roof to whatever. And so that's what the department heads are tasked to put together and, you know, obviously come before us. And we'll see that whole list. But there was just a lot of information tonight on, on our Tid districts, you know, kind of talking about adding more money into roads and, and talking about compensation. We're going to talk about that here in a minute again. But if you have any questions, make sure that you ask. You can ask publicly, you can ask privately, but please get your questions answered. By the time we get to whatever the last date was on there, Jay, sorry, that's time to adopt the budget. We can't, it's, you, you wait until the last date that was on that screen. It's too late. So Alderman Allen.
It was November 11th.
November 11th.
That's, that's a day you want to remember. And the presentation, you send this one out. Also, Jay?
Yep. Just, just sent it. You have them both.
Any other questions? All right. We'll move on to our consent agenda. It's listed. I'm not going to read off every item here. We just took all these up in committee items four through 18.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen and Alderman Sternig. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda items are approved. All right. We'll move on to some other agenda items for consideration. Continued implementation of the McGrath compensation study. Jay?
So I did mention that briefly as a budget goal for 2025 slash 2026. You did receive it in your packet. Some of you were present when this went into place back in 2022. Again, I'll just maybe restate the, the fact that we had many tenured employees that have been serving for the city of West Bend, that we were only, because it was such a significant lift the first time, we were so far behind. And if you peeked at the study, you saw that, that it was such a significant lift to just get our employees to the minimum, we weren't able to move them to the recommended midpoint or market rate at, at that time in 2022. Since then, because the, in, in true fashion for in trying to implement, fully implement the study, it encouraged the council, the city to implement the rest of the plan within a five-year period of time. We did take the last couple of years and add a extra percent or a percent and a half to those greater than five-year with the city of West Bend employees above the cost of living increase that others received. That I will, I will say was a nice gesture, but it didn't move the needle. The market continued to move up and especially in these last couple of years. And we were, we are now adjusting our pay plan accordingly, appropriately with the cost of living. So the, the minor amount that we were able to add to those employees really didn't get them any closer or much closer than we, than where we started them back in 2022. So this, this recommendation, this plan does do that. I applaud Michelle for taking the lead and our HR director and, and going through that math. We didn't, we didn't go out and hire another study to show us how further we're behind than we have been. We all know that. We need to get our employees to that market rate and this two-year plan does that. I'll stop talking and answer any questions that you might have, Mayor and Council.
Alderman Allen?
Yeah. What, what are the, what are the costs associated with doing it in two years? If we're doing it in two years, you obviously know what we're going to do first year. What remains the second year?
Yeah. As far as the actual numbers, I don't, I don't have those.
Ballpark.
For me, but it's all in if everybody were moved from the current area where they're at in the first year to market would be around $500,000. Not just the general fund, but all of the funds would be a $500,000 move. Because the market moves when, when, if we wait two years to, to the 2026 year, there's a significant chunk of that that happens in, in 2025. And then another, the, the remainder plus the market movement in 2026. So the, the 500,000, 500 and plus thousand that would, that would need to occur in 2025 would then be split over those two years, plus the market increase, if that makes sense.
Good question. Any other questions about the study itself? Some of us, I wasn't here, but I remember it. Some were here, some were not when the study came out. That study's been emailed to us last Friday, so we all have it. But if there's any, any other questions as it relates to what we're trying to do as far as getting our employees to a, a competitive market rate, this isn't the high end of the scale. And we're talking about employees who are below the, call it the midpoint or the market rate is what the study called it, to get them up to that competitive, at least somewhat competitive level of pay. And as we know that inflation and things over the past few years, that market rate continues to climb. And so a 1% increase, trying to get you a little bit closer, but cost of living and things go up even higher than that. It just, we aren't playing, we're not getting there fast enough. And so.
What is the percentage? What do you mean? What's the percentage of increase?
So it varies by employee if that.
Okay.
If that's your question. Yeah. Some of the employees to move from current to market is significant, like a 12% increase. We're, we're that far behind. And some of them are less than that. And it, it varies between probably four and 12.
And it's, it's not every, I mean, we're not talking everyone is 12% to get to market.
So honestly, that's part of the, sorry to interrupt.
No, go ahead.
That's part of the frustration on our, on be, appropriately so on behalf of our tenure, tenured employees is that since 2021, when the study was completed and everybody was, if you will, on an equal playing field, we've had retirements or people leave our organization for various reasons. And tenured employees have been, I'll say, stuck at that rate that they were placed at at 2022. In order to be competitive and recruit anybody, we've had to recruit at market or close to market for new employees. So new employees come in at a rate that's here and tenured employees who are doing great things for the city of West Bend and have been for 30 years are still here. So I, it's, it's hard to say just a percent, but it's really the whole pay plan needs to be right-sized and corrected. This, this does that.
And again, just to clarify, it's not all employees. This is not across the board. This is specifically looking at those more tenured employees within the organization who have experienced, having been lower with smaller increases over time versus those who have come in and are relatively new to the organization that are coming in at higher levels. We're not looking to make those types of adjustments. It's more, to your point, right sizing those who have been here, who are tenured valuable employees of the city of West Bend.
Yeah. Thanks for clarifying, Alderman Sternig. Five years and greater is the, when I say tenured employees, that's, that's the threshold that Michelle used to create this plan. It does have some movement for four-year employees and then three-year employees as well, as we bring in new, new team members. But the, the bulk of the situation that needs correcting are those employees that have been here for a long time, five years or greater.
Alderman Allen?
Yeah. So what is the mechanism used? What's the algorithm used to select which employees happen in year one, which ones happen in year two?
Well, we, we just, I'll say we did the math. We, we, we took the significant increase that would need to get everybody to market and then divided that into two years plus the movement for the, for the second year, if that makes sense. So we divided the increase over two years and then added the market movement from 2024 to 25 to 26, if that makes sense.
So you're, you're talking about doing this then in two years, not half the first year, half the second?
Not half of the employees, half of the raise.
Sorry.
And so every employee who falls into a category that needs to get a bump, let's say in one year it costs $500,000. If you split it into two years, it might cost $250,000 for the first year, but it might cost 300 for the second year because that, that market rate bumped another percent or two. But it's not, it's not splitting. These employees are going to get it first versus those. It's, it's just taking it in, in two chunks. So an individual that's, you know, 10% below market would get 5% and then another, well, it might be 6% the next year because market goes up another percent.
That's the salary, right?
Yep. Exempt employees. It does not include our unions. And it's, and it's exempt employees that, salaried employees that have been here five years or longer. My apologies. Alderman Allen, if I was confusing with, I wasn't trying to split the baby. That's not.
That's what it sounded like. Sorry.
Obviously with another piece that backs up the need for this is we just did an employee opinion survey and the number one, you know, call it beef that people have with this organization is paying benefits. And when people leave the organization, you know, it might not always be paying benefits, but I guarantee that's probably mentioned at least 95% of the time. Our, our, I believe we have fantastic employees who I want to keep here and they needed to be, they need to be paid according to the market rate. And in other words, I don't want someone to leave and go to Hartford or Appleton or whatever, simply because they can make more money. If we can be competitive with our pay, we ought to be able to keep good quality people. And it's, it does cost money. Unfortunately, we didn't keep up with the market rates that were increasing over the past, I don't know, 10 or 12 years. I can't remember. Similar to, we haven't been spending enough money on our roads over the past however many years. And so now we're talking about, well, crap, we better spend some more money on roads. Well, we better spend some more money on our people if we want to keep them around. So Alderman, it's part.
I agree with the same thing. We, we spent the money on a study. If we don't use it, it was money wasted. The recommendation is to get these people up to where they should be, the market rate. Jay's coming up with the plan. Let's see what we can do to get it done. And the other part is too, we've seen good people leave because of this reason. And it's like, let's keep the good people. You guys, your employees, you do the work and let's get it done. Keep it up. Thank you.
Any other comments? Yes?
Yeah. I, I agree with, with keeping our people up there, getting our people up there where they belong. If we don't, they're going to leave. And most of those people that probably are going to leave are people that's been here a long time, has done a fantastic job for the city of West Bend. And where are we going to find people with that caliber of experience and talent? That's going to be pretty hard to fill those seats. And over just 5%, 6%, whatever, 10%. We've got great people here and I agree, we need to keep them here. And if it has to be to get them back up to the market where it's supposed to be, that's, that's got to be done. I totally approve of this program. Two years is, is just right down my alley. I appreciate it.
Alderman Allen?
I would just say that one of my concerns with doing this in a two-year plan is we're kicking this down the road to the next council. We can't, we can't commit the next council to, to do that second year. We can, we can make the, the tough choice and, and do it this year for this council. But if we break this into two years, it could very easily not happen. So that's my, my concern and why I, why I wanted the, the total cost, you know, what, what that impact would be on our budget to do it all at one time.
That's a, that is a true statement. We cannot bind future councils. True statement. Any other comments?
I'll just say thank you. Thank you to the employees that are here tonight. Thank you for your patience in us getting to this conversation, to be able to get to market, to bring, bring a proposal that gets you all to market and everybody else that isn't here. And thanks to the council for being able to, the mayor suggested putting this on the agenda. I think it was a great suggestion to have this conversation and pre-2025 budget year. I agree that with Alderman Allen's statement that no existing council can bind a future, bind a future council, that's a true statement. I would hope that if a two-year decision is made, that although you can't bind a future council, the folks that are sitting around this table would feel really strongly about seeing it through and just make, making that two-year commitment to, to getting the rest of the appropriate increase into 2026's budget. Thank you.
Are we looking for action on this tonight? Or, because I mean, ultimately it's going to come down to action on the budget, correct?
Yeah, correct. I didn't think it was an action item. I guess I was hoping to learn from a consensus, consensus standpoint of what you wanted me, us to do as a team to build the budget. And I think I kind of feel that, but.
I would personally like to spend more time with it.
Yep. And, and anybody else as well?
Yeah, you're, let's sit down and talk one-on-one, go through the numbers.
A little bit more detail.
Sure.
Yep. And if anybody wants to have it as an agenda item again in the next, I don't know, two weeks, four weeks, eight weeks, let me know. And we can, this is a big part of our budgeting process and obviously a big part of our, I call it talented human capital that we want to try to keep and, and compensate fairly. And so good discussion tonight. I don't want to cut anybody off if there's any other final thoughts. Okay. We'll move on to item number 20, appointment of a tourism commissioner for, as our hotel representative on the tourism commission. Jay, you're the chair of the tourism commission. Do you want to give us a quick background on this?
Sure. Our tourism commission representative from the hotel industry moved away, took a different job. So we're in need of a replacement and the recommendation is before you.
I didn't write down this woman's name.
Linda Churney.
Okay. Do you want to make the motion with her name?
I'll move that we accept Linda Churney for appointment for the hotel position on the tourism commission.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Alderman Allen and Alderman, Alderman Sternig. Any other questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next is a national farmers' week proclamation. All in our team, a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlook and Alderwoman Sizer. I have the proclamation here. Would you like me to read it or would you like to read it afterwards? How about this? Who's available to go to the farmer's market this Saturday at 10:00 AM? Anybody?
I don't know.
I usually get there, but.
They're every Saturday anyways.
I will be reading this on Saturday at 10:00 AM at the farmer's market. So why don't I save it?
Where are you going to be?
Veterans, no.
Old settlers.
Old settlers park.
Okay.
I assume, right there. All right. We'll, we'll save that for Saturday. All, I should get him, we've got the motion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, three years in a row, best farmer's market in the state of Wisconsin. All right, Jim Renke, please come forward. We're going to take item 23 first. So item number 23 is a resolution approving a four-lot certified, certified survey map and accepting right-of-way dedication for Schuster Drive, located on the north side of Schuster Drive and west of Wildwood Road by Shepherd of Hills.
Thank you. I'm asking council to consider a resolution accepting right-of-way for this four-lot certified survey map that was done out in, in the city here. What it does is essentially gives us 17 feet of right-of-way for future expansion for Schuster Drive.
Any questions?
I'm just going to make it known for 23 and 22, since I'm a member at Shepherd of the Hills, I'm going to abstain.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion. Alderman Sparks?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Berquist. Any comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we'll mark down one abstention. That motion carries. Item number 22 is the approval of a, of a developers' agreement for the four lots located north of Schuster Drive and west of Wildwood Road by Shepherd of the Hills.
So this developers' agreement that I'm asking for approval on is semi-unique. The area does have, the agreement addresses utilities and whatnot for the, for the area. This doesn't have sewer available to it, so this agreement addresses the utilities for sewer availability along with the water connection hookups. So we're asking the council to consider the development approval for that and so we can move forward with sales of the lots.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlook and Alderman Schmidt. Any comments, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Jim.
Our last item for action tonight is ordinance change to chapter 1.224, the membership of the collective bargaining committee. Just a little background on this. We, we are starting negotiations with our fire union this week. Back in June of 2023, the membership changed of this committee and I, it was, I overlooked it. I didn't know that it had changed. I thought the finance chair was a member of this committee and the change was made back in 2023, that the finance chair was no longer on the committee. At that time, we also did add our assistant city administrator to that committee, which made sense. So I wanted to put this on the agenda just to make sure the council is aware of who is on the committee. The collective bargaining committee is made up of the mayor, HR director, city administrator, assistant city administrator, and either the fire chief or police chief. So I will let you, again, I just want to make sure everybody was aware, if we want to keep that membership, this is one of the committees that I don't appoint people to. This is in city code. So it's, the membership is done by the council. And so if you would like to keep the committee, that is perfectly fine. If you'd like to change the committee, I'll leave that up to you.
I would like to make a motion to amend the municipal section 1.224, collective bargaining committee, paragraph one, membership, to insert finance committee chair immediately after the assistant city administrator and the fire and, and the chief of police or fire chief as appropriate. That paragraph would then read, "Membership. The collective bargaining committee shall consist of six members," we'll have to change five to six, so six members, comma, "which shall include the mayor, comma, human relations, or human resources director, comma, city administrator, comma, assistant city administrator, comma, and, let's see, finance committee chair, comma, and the chief of police or fire chief as appropriate."
Second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Zinkheimer. Heard you first, so appreciate that. Again, collective bargaining committee, this would change our code to six members, the mayor, human resources director, city administrator, assistant city administrator, finance committee chair, and the chief of police or fire as appropriate. This is a first reading of this change. If we vote unanimously, we can have it pass tonight. If not, it'll come back for a second reading if it's not unanimous at our next council meeting. Alderman Allen?
Quick question for our city attorney. Would, would the meeting, the council meeting that we have scheduled for next Monday be an appropriate second meeting or would have to be a, a general council?
If it's not unanimous, you can waive the second reading?
I, so could I amend my amendment or my motion to waive the second reading?
You can, somebody can make a motion to waive the second reading if needed. I mean, I would take a vote on it to see if it's unanimous first and then if, you can make a motion to waive the second reading for unanimous adoption or for immediate adoption if, if needed.
Okay.
So what's the impetus behind this, Mark?
I'm sorry, what?
What's the impetus?
What's the impetus behind this change?
We are just entering into negotiate, labor negotiations with Act 10 allows unions. This would be the fire and police unions.
Now, what's the reason for the change, though?
Well, the finance, finance committee chair served as the council's representative in those agreements. We're the ones that actually have to, have to appropriate funds. So he was, that, that individual in that position represented the interests of the council.
Our current finance committee chair is Alderman Sternig. And so this would include him in the negotiations.
Gotcha.
Any other questions, comments?
It just, it was removed when we, we updated ordinance one, or, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't know the history. I was just trying to understand.
Yeah, we, and it, the finance chair was taken. We missed it.
Yeah, there was, there was a bigger package. With the time we did this, there was a bigger package than our agenda packet for tonight. So if you can believe that we were dealing with something much bigger, missing one minor change is not surprising.
It was approximately 906 pages long.
Yeah, I wouldn't say that, but yeah.
All right. We have a motion and a second on the floor to amend the city code 1.224. And I've already read it a couple times. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is unanimous, so that does pass. And I'll ask the clerk to change the code. All right. We're going to move on to reports tonight. Our library board met on July 16th, 2024. Thank you, sir. Take it away. All right. Thank you and welcome, everybody, to Library Board 101. This is your connection to the library board meeting that was held on the 16th, right? And I didn't steal that from Phil, okay, when you saw tid 101 up there. So it's, okay. So not to sound like a broken record, but we are anything but consistent in how we, how our meetings occur. We start off by showing respect to our country and our flag by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. We approve the consent agenda, which has the minutes of the last board meeting and the expenditures for the last month. In other words, we pay the bill. Okay? Then we hear the financial reports and fund balance updates to make sure that we have the assets to pay the bills. We also acknowledge individuals who donate to the library and its operations. This month, we thank Mark and Julie Olson for their contribution to the Outreach Garden Memorial. Thank you, Olsons. Then the library director briefs us on things happening around the library, after providing us with written staff reports from the different sections, things like policy reviews, one that we're going to be doing in the next couple of weeks, review of the budget, which Steve will submit to the city here shortly, and new agreements that we have made with local schools and teachers, making it easier for them to access material and services. We were briefed on the rising costs of Hoopla, which happens to be one of the most popular online services that we have. Bottom line is that we must have to make a sacrifice sometime down the road, that we have to sacrifice download speed versus the online services. Okay? So we have to make a decision here sometime soon. And to put it this way, and it was presented this way, fast or free. Okay? This is a decision that we're going to have to eventually consider. Steve also had the police department stop by and conduct a preliminary security audit of the library, considering that it is a polling place and that the election season is heating up. Suggestions included limiting some door access, adding more cameras, and the possibilities of moving the children's area upstairs. Further input and discussion will be needed before we implement any of that, any of those suggestions. Last, we're looking for notification on our application for the flexible facilities grant somewhere around October 1st. This would be great news as this grant would help us fund some of our self-check project that we've discussed before at this council. The board president reflected on this handout. I don't have enough for all of you, but I can pass it around. It's just a little thing that Steve put together through staff to represent some of the statistics. So when I come up here and give you all these numbers, they're going to have some neat little form-added things so to put out, something similar to the reports, the monthly reports that the police department and fire department put out. So it'll give you guys information, okay? It'll keep you guys informed and put me out of a job. Not really. But there were no items for consideration and the next meeting is scheduled for August 20th. So thank you for your time. Thank you. Park and Rec Commission meeting on July 25th, 2024.
Thank you. Yes, we did meet on July 25th. There was a video conference link available this time, and I think about 50% of the committee did choose that option. So it was a short and sweet meeting. Michelle Nast from West Bend Park, West Bend Friends of Sculpture, made a presentation for placement of two sculptures. One is titled Ribbon and will be on the River Shores Triangle between Veterans Avenue and Village Green Parkway. The other is titled Rib Mountain and will be at Riverside Park, behind the tennis courts and overlooking the Frisbee Golf Feeds, Fields. I think that's back where Tom Lidkey's Ayuga Daydream is located also. Potentially, installation will be early to late fall. The installation cost is approximately $10,000 for each. That will be covered by the sculpture group. And park staff will assist with the site prep and restoration. They will be held by West Bend Friends of Sculpture on a five-year loan agreement. There was a comment that sculptures like this usually do stay longer than that. Both acquisitions were approved by the committee. There was also an overview of potential future sites, one being the South Roundabout outside the hub, and the other at or near the kayak launch downtown. Each has its own challenges, but ideas and possibilities are being explored for those two locations. Also announced were donations to the Park and Rec Department, $10,000 from Enchantment in the Park, which was the final installment on the Regner Beach House renovation, and $10,000 from West Bend Friends of Park and Rec. That was their final installment for the Regner Beach House renovation. So thank you to both Enchantment in the Park and West Bend Friends of Park and Rec. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Seizer. We've done this last section of our agenda kind of informally for a number of years. And I talked to Jay and I said, we should kind of formalize this process of kind of, we call it for the good of the order. And I want Jay to, and our administrative team to be a part of it as well. So that's what you see listed here. So if you have an update on something in the community, in your district, we're, we're going to do that at this point in the agenda. So if you have nothing, that's fine, too. Just say nothing to report tonight or whatever. So Jay, anything from you?
I'll just share a couple of things that are, that are coming. The Sand Drive and Summit, I was going to share that. We talked about that a lot. Those two roads are opening soon. They were great projects and really should be well-received by our community. Great job. Max isn't here any longer, but great job to him and his team for, for leading that project. The Hunnand Group, as many of you know, was, was commissioned by the commission to do a study by the tourism commission. The mayor just mentioned that I serve as the chair of that group and we just added a, a new member. That, the results of that study are coming to us soon. We have a meeting scheduled for, for mid-August to assemble again and hear directly from the Hunnand Group. Want you to all know that it's coming back positively. They were looking at a, the possibility of an, an additional hotel to our system and the possibility of a, a convention center or a hotel slash convention center. It's leaning in that direction. We're not large enough. It didn't come back, the study's not coming back. That says we're going to have a full-on need for a convention center, but a, a new hotel with approximately 100 rooms. So pretty exciting to hear that as they've done their work and the research within our community, interviewed many venues, all the hotels and some of the local leaders elected and otherwise within the community, that the, the, the demand for our hotels is so strong that they are likely to recommend. And that'll be first heard by the, by the tourism commission on August 21st and then out to our community as a whole. But pretty exciting stuff that that, that that study came back so positively or is in the process of coming back so positively. And then lastly, I'll just mention something that Mike and his team have continued to do a great job of leading, the downtown planters. The last three large planters are in. They're located throughout the downtown area for the south, mid-block by Tenny's, and then on the north end by the former Washington House, the taproom that those three are in. The, the soil is in. Mike's team will be working on the trees yet this week and then the follow-up plants. That'll come soon. So as you make it, make your way downtown, check those out. They're, they're pretty awesome and well-received. That's all I have, Mayor. Unless there are any questions?
Any questions? Any updates from the Aldermen? Alderman Butcher?
Yeah, since I have Regner Park, there's been a lot of activities going on down there. The Ninja Mud Run was fantastic. It was unbelievable. I saw some kids, you couldn't tell whether they were anybody underneath all that mud. It was really great. About this weekend, I believe there is an 80s festival coming up down at Regner Park this week. And then in a couple of weeks, we've got German Fest at Regner Park. Hopefully, that's, they're all excited about getting that set up down there. And hopefully, we'll have a lot of fun and a lot of German beer.
Yes. Any other updates? Alderman Sparks?
My district's been seeing a lot of utility work by fiber, with fiber installation. And I've been getting a lot of complaints in that and working with Max and Doug, and they've been great and giving me some contacts. And it's just been a lot of running over lawns and running down easements. So it's, it's something that when they're in your area, be ready.
Alderman Berquist?
Hi. I have some more. So you guys, you didn't want to go home yet, did you? So District 3, I'm from District 3. And you know, in Wisconsin, there's only two seasons, right? There's winter and there's road construction, right? So District 3 has more than its fair share of the latter. Projects at Main and Decorah, Main Paradise, Paradise and Silverbrook, Hawthorne Drive have made it challenging getting around. So take a deep breath, be careful driving around the workers, and before you know it, it'll be winter. Taco Bell, not Taco Bell, looks like Taco John's, the remodel of the Alta Beauty Building and the addition of Menards is progressing and it will be a nice addition to the community. I hope everyone participated in the citywide rummage sale this last weekend. And I hope that they either, people found, either found new treasures or some people made room by downsizing some of their possessions. So just a quick reminder, be sure to pick up those roadside signs, okay? We want to make sure that we keep our city beautiful. And speaking of beautiful, congratulations go out to Judy and Doug Mayer for their being selected for District 3, winners of the Mayor's Beautification Committee, or Awards. So we'll be talking about those here coming up shortly. So, and then just for all the citizens of District 3, if you have anything you want me to report in this or issues that you want me to help with, reach out to me, give me a call, text or email. The numbers are in the city's website.
Very good. Alderman Allen?
I have a few items. First, tomorrow morning, bid board meeting is here in the council chambers at 8:15. Wednesday, also here in council chambers, at 9:00 AM is the public test of the voting machines. The city clerk will be leading that process, but every voting machine that will be used either in a district or in central count is thoroughly tested and then sealed up prior to going out to the, either central to going out to the, either central count or the district for the partisan primary on August 13th. Today is the 5th, the 11th?
13th.
13th. Math, always, always good. Let's see, there's, Visit West Bend will be, the Visit West Bend group will be at the State Fair in the Visit Wisconsin, because West Bend is part of Wisconsin most of the time. So that'll be Friday. On Thursday, the final walkthrough and acceptance and hopefully opening of Summit Drive will take place, starting at 9:00 a.m. Delayed a couple days because the contractor didn't want to have any punch list items, so we're looking forward to that. I did take a look at it, and I walked it over the weekend, and it already looks great, and they were outlining it, and you know, it really looks like a real street now. So I guess the goats are going to have to find somewhere else to go. And as far as the library, I would invite everybody to join Free Coffee Friday, which is pretty much every Friday at the library from 10 till 11. But join Free Coffee Friday for an interesting topic.
Very good.
I think that's got it for today.
Alderman Sternig?
I've got just one quick item. While summer is winding down, we are just now beginning registration, not beginning registrations, registrations are underway for Little League baseball and softball in our fall season, which are held down by our, at the Little League complex, which is just north of Manitou on Water Street. Evaluations are tomorrow night and Wednesday night to get into the league for the fall. If you aren't currently in the league and looking to register, go to westbennlittleleague.com.
Cool. Any other announcements? If you're interested in ribbon cutting, Modern Ledger is a new business in town. There's a ribbon cutting at noon tomorrow that I will be attending. I'd love to have you with me. I already mentioned 10:00 a.m. at the farmer's market this Saturday. The West Bend Area Chamber of Commerce is hosting Cash Bash this weekend, so we'll have hundreds, hundreds of Geo cashers in town on Friday and Saturday. And as I think Alderman Butchlick mentioned, they're having a free concert on Friday night at Regner Park at 5:00, in concert with that, and it's an '80s and August theme. And we do have a plan commission meeting here tomorrow night at 6:00. That's all.
The city, the Geo cashers cover. Is it mainly downtown, or is it?
No, it's, they, they put it, they put additional Geo cashers out, Geo caches out just for this weekend, and it's all over town, so.
Not a private property deal, is it?
It's, we're putting one in each of the Alderman's backyards, yes. No, I'm kidding.
Just in Bill's backyard.
Not a private property deal. Yes, Alderman?
I missed one, one minor item. I have an answer to your question about the labyrinth handicap parking. I'd been requesting that for a while, and it's in the plan for 2025, correct?
We now have also included department heads.
The estimated cost for those two parking stalls are $34,000. We will have that as part of our 2025 capital budget discussion. Last couple of years, for our department, we are looking, or we were able to acquire or use about $300,000 worth of capital equipment, capital projects and equipment on an annual basis. I could easily ask for $800,000 on an annual basis, so I will leave it up to our discussions with city administration, other departments, and this governing body to see where that $34,000 will land on the priority list. I don't want to say it's on, in the 2025 budget, because we haven't figured that out yet, and I'm just trying to be neutral on, on how to state that. So we have many requests and many different priorities. I'm very aware of the parking stalls. Barb Robertson stands in my office and talks to me about it.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
We do have an item that is appropriate for closed session tonight, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, section 19.851E, which is deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investment of public funds, or conducting other specified business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, and this is namely the former UWWC campus building. So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Sternig and Alderwoman Seizer. I'll do a roll call vote. Alderman Schmidt? This is a yes or no to enter into closed session? Yes. Alderman Zinkshaim?
Aye.
Alderman Sparts?
Aye.
Alderwoman Seizer?
Aye.
Alderman Berquist?
Aye.
Alderman Butchlick?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Sternig?
Aye.
Great, thank you. We will not have any action in closed session tonight, so we will adjourn our common council meeting from closed session.